Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call this meeting of Allegheny County Council to order. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for a moment of silent prayer or reflection. Thank you. Please be seated. Jared, please take role.
Ms. Bennet.
Here.
Mr. Bekowski.
Here.
Mr. DeMarco.
Here.
Mr. Dewar.
Here.
Ms. Filiagi.
Here.
Mr. Fadulis.
Here.
Ms. Hallam.
Here.
Mr. Klein.
Here.
Mr. Macy. Ms. Nakareti Chapkus.
Here.
Mr. Paul Mary.
Here.
Mr. Paul Messina.
Here.
Ms. Pritzio.
Here.
Mr. Walton.
Here.
President Katina.
Here.
We have 14 members present currently.
The first proclamation will be read into the record, 12509-22.
A proclamation recognizing and celebrating the 100th birthday of Mattie Patton sponsored by Councilmember Paul Messina.
And the following proclamations will all be presented, 12484-22.
A proclamation congratulating Bradley Jaeger on achieving the rank of Eagle Scout, sponsored by Councilmember Pritzio.
I'm so glad that Bradley could come here. And let me read this certificate of recognition to Bradley Jaeger, achieving the rank of Eagle Scout. This certificate is presented to Bradley Jaeger for his dedication and effort in achieving the rank of Eagle Scout. Bradley is a member of the Boy Scout Troop 622. Bradley's project entailed him weeding, mulching, and planting flowers at all seven flower beds at Glen Show Valley Presbyterian Church. He also planted pollinator-friendly plants to liven up the gardens. Bradley did all of this with the help of others from his troop and neighboring troops. Bradley's hard work and commitment are to be commended as we celebrate his ascension to the rank of Eagle Scout in Boy Scout Troop 622. And this is sponsored by Councilmember Anita Pritzio and presented this 25th day of October 2022.
I've never met any of you, but hi. You just met me. I mean, this is something that wasn't even in my head when I started scouting. It was more or less like, I've come so far, why turn away now? And I couldn't have finished it without the support of my parents. It was a lot of paperwork and having someone help me be guided through it and supported and pushed along was the only way that I was able to complete it. And I'm just glad that I managed to make it across the finish line because there's so many that didn't. And I'll carry it with me for the rest of my life, so thank you.
Does he want to come also for a picture? Is that your dad there?
Yeah, that's my father.
Does he want to come? Do you want to come up?
A proclamation honoring Marshall Cohen on an illustrious career and dedication and passion for reading that led him to start the Greater Pittsburgh Festival of Books, which celebrates Pittsburgh's rich literary tradition, sponsored by Councilmember Klein. And before this proclamation is presented, please let the record reflect that Mr. Macy is present.
Well, this evening, we honor Marshall Cohen. And he's not exactly a household name yet, but, you know, he will be. But we recognize him for something that, you know, he helped pull off in no small way and, as he would tell us, with a great deal of help. But I think that he really inspired the launch of the Greater Pittsburgh Literary Festival this past May. So just a couple of things I would share to you, just share with you with respect to Pittsburgh's, you know, literary past, literary history, past and present as well. So poet Michael Worster wrote, "Everyone should write a poem about a steel mill." So this is something that was shared by a writer by the name of Christopher Collins, writing in an online publication called Literary Hub. And he said this, he said, "I long to be a writer from Pittsburgh, not a writer in Pittsburgh." But in fact, Pittsburgh has been identified as one of the most literate cities in the country. And I would say that the literary soil in this region is pretty rich. And there is a website that's been launched over the past two years called Litzburg. So when we think about, you know, writers from this region, I'll just name a few, and I'm just scratching the surface. But for example, have you heard of August Wilson? Yeah, a preeminent American playwright, August Wilson, John Edgar Weidman, Terrence Hayes, the playwright George S. Kaufman. Gertrude Stein was born in Allegheny City, now known as the North Side. Willa Cather, Damon Young, Yona Harvey, David McCullough, Annie Dillard, all hailed from Pittsburgh. And you could probably go on and on with that list because it's really quite expansive. So about three years ago, in 2019, I had the opportunity to meet Marshall Cohen. And we started talking, and he had moved back to Pittsburgh after having been away from Pittsburgh for many, many years. And while we were talking, he suggested that, you know, Pittsburgh should probably have a book festival, a literary festival. And I, you know, I heard him and I thought, I said, "Yeah, why not?" And he actually made it happen. So we're here to honor him for that achievement tonight. And as I'm standing here, I would also share this with you. So this is the program from this past, for the first one, the inaugural Literary Festival in May. And if you're, you know, kind of, if you have your calendars out, the festival this year will be on, in next year, rather, will be May 12th and 13th of 2023. All members of council have this program. So all of you will have a chance to join us and to celebrate writers from this area and beyond during this festival. But just a couple of more things I would say about Mr. Cohen as well. And so this proclamation is partly biographical, I would say. So Marshall Cohen attended and graduated from Pittsburgh Public Schools, grew up here, Liberty Elementary School, Linden was mine, and Peabody High School. He then graduated from the University of California, UCLA, with a bachelor's degree in political science and a minor in journalism. And following his graduation from UCLA, Mr. Cohen embarked on a 50-year career in strategic government relations, public policy advocacy, and communications, most recently retiring from the Babcock and Wilcox Company, where he served as Vice President of Government Affairs and Communications. Prior to that role, he served as a Senior Director for State and Local Government Affairs for the Nuclear Energy Institute in Washington, DC. And during Mr. Cohen's career, he served on a number of boards, including the Maine State Board of Education, appointed by the governor and confirmed by the Maine Senate, the Foundation for State Legislatures of the National Conference of State Legislatures, and the Economic Development Corporation of Lee County, New Mexico. He served as the first chairman of Virginia Nuclear Energy Consortium Authority, to which he was appointed by the governor of Virginia, and as a member of the North Carolina Energy Policy Council, appointed by the president of the North Carolina Senate. So now be it resolved that I, Paul Klein, as a member of Allegheny County Council, do hereby recognize and honor the illustrious career of Mr. Marshall Cohen and his dedication and commitment to the Greater Pittsburgh Books Festival and his initiative to inspire more individuals to read and support entities that encourage reading. This council wishes the Greater Festival of Books continued and greater success as it prepares for its 2023 program that will take place on May 12th and 13th, 2023, and witness whereof, I hereon to cause the seal of the county of Allegheny to be affixed this 22nd day of November, 2022. So thank you very much. Congratulations. Thank you. And please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Councilmember Klein, members. Thank you so very much. That's way more information than I think you wanted, but I'm very honored, as Paul said, a native Pittsburgher. My mother worked at Kaufman's for many, many years. It's very humbling to receive some kind of recognition from you. But more importantly, we were very excited about what the community was able to do with this first book festival. It was free, and that's a founding principle, that as far as I'm concerned and I'm ever involved, it will always be free to all, everyone, and all communities. And we strove very hard to make it diverse, and we had, you know, programs ranging for all kinds of things, for children's and families, and a wide variety of interests and genres and authors, many from Pittsburgh, some Pittsburgh-related, award-winning authors from outside, Pulitzer Prize winner, National Book Award winner, and things like that. So a lot of people made this happen, not just me, but the vision caught on and we're very excited about it. I like to say that if Pittsburgh could have a pickle festival, it certainly should have a book festival. And that's what we aim for. We are embarking now on our, the next one, the Second Annual Greater Pittsburgh Festival of Books. It's scheduled, as Paul said. We are, if I may be shameless, we are in the process of developing our resources for that. We're working on grants and sponsors and donors. I want to give a shout out to the Allegheny County Department of Economic Development because they gave us a grant for this first festival, and without that grant, we would not have been able to do it. It was very, very helpful. We're very hopeful that perhaps the council can look and see if there's some small amount of resource that it could contribute to the planning and the development of our next festival. We have wonderful support, University of Pittsburgh Library System, I've met with the new director of the Carnegie Library System, very supportive, Duolingo, companies like that, KDKA will be a presenting sponsor at the next festival and so forth. So we're very excited. We're going to work again for number two, and we hope to have some involvement from the county if we can. And we overloaded you with paper, but if you have a chance, take a look, and my information and contact information is there. Again, thank you so very, very much. I am deeply honored.
All right. Ready, one, two, three. Okay, one more. Ready, one, two, three.
Okay, we'll knock out 12511-22.
That's a proclamation honoring and congratulating the 2022 Get Involved 13th Annual Service Summit Honorees, sponsored by Councilmember Dewar.
It's that time of year again. I was really privileged and honored when former Councilman Baker reached out to me to present tonight's proclamation to honor the Get Involved Service Summit Honorees this year. Councilman Baker was gracious enough to honor me as one of the PA Rising Stars during last year's service summit, and I incredibly appreciative of that. And Councilman Baker, one of the things you, you know, as I've heard you talk so often about, you know, during your time on council and during your time with Get Involved, is to, you know, join boards, get involved in the community. And the reason why I was not able to attend the service summit last week was I was actually attending a ALON meeting as a board member. So I took your advice quite literally, in having joined that board. So, you know, and I just personally want to thank Tom and everyone at Get Involved Inc. for working to both empower and highlight individuals across southwestern Pennsylvania to get involved in their communities. So whereas Get Involved Pittsburgh is founded in 1999 to develop leaders who have a passion to revitalize communities, Get Involved is just one of five independent centers across the United States, with the first being founded in San Francisco in 1942. Other Get Involved centers opened in Los Angeles, St. Louis, and New York. And whereas each one of these centers formed partnerships with philanthropic foundations, high schools, college campuses, governments, businesses, and civic networking associations in order to recruit various leaders who are passionate about revitalizing communities. And whereas Get Involved brings these leaders together into cohorts to learn and to accomplish shared goals in collaborative way to sustain leadership community after the Get Involved program. These leaders, the leaders all hold true to Get Involved's mission throughout the program. And whereas Get Involved has the mission to advance ethical leaders in order to create a connected and inclusive community that is more livable for everyone. In doing so, Get Involved holds core values in their leaders such as whole system thinking, teamwork, experimental learning, and nurturing leadership. And whereas these core values have been extensively shown in handful of leaders throughout this year's course, therefore recognizing Juanita Lomax and Chief Greg Porter for being awarded People of the Year, Aubrey Marquise and Dylan Beam for Emerging Leader, for the Emerging Leader Awards, Stephanie, some...
Some Olivet.
Thank you. Thank you. And Shannon Baron for the Community Leader Award, and Dr. Amanda Lycheck for the Child Advocacy Award. And whereas with excellent leadership and strong values, 13 individuals are being recognized as Western PA Rising Stars. They are Megan Cully, Amber Deemer, Abby Kelly, Julia Keimer, Jake Letts.
Letts Allen, good.
Yeah. Thank you, Tom. Caitlin Minow, Elizabeth Manikowski, Julia McDonald, Xandrie McDonald, Dominic Pinucci, Nathan Nathaniel Sofranco, Monica Snyder, and Elena Weber. Now therefore be it resolved that I, County Councilmember Tom Dewar, a former Western PA Rising Star, do hereby recognize all the hard work and passion by the Get Involved Pittsburgh puts into developing leaders who have a passion to revitalize communities. In addition, I recognize and graduate all of this year's awards, honorees, and recipients. And witness herof, I have hereon to cause the seal of Allegheny to be affixed this 17th day of November, 2022. Congrats to all of this year's honorees, and I will turn it over to my illustrious former colleague, Councilman Tom Baker.
Thanks, Tom Dewar. All right, thanks, everybody. It's an honor to be back. People ask, "Do I miss you?" All the time. And the answer is, yes, I do miss you, and I miss being in this room. So it's nice to be here. Thanks to Councilmember Dewar for the kind words, and congratulations on being a winner last year of the award. So we got a good group of our honorees. We had a wonderful event last Thursday night at the Coro Center, which Tom referenced a couple of times in his remarks. It was the perfect spot to have the service summit for our 13th year, and it's been all over the region over its history, but we were glad to have it at Coro. Yesterday, the city of Pittsburgh, your colleagues from the building over declared a Get Involved Day in the city of Pittsburgh, which was very nice, and some of our honorees got to be at that ceremony as well. I'm very thankful for these kind folks. Many of you that I used to serve with always would say, "Who are those incredibly nice people that you bring once a year?" That's the Get Involved Award winners. I'm inspired by them. When Mr. Rogers talked about the helpers in the world, these are the helpers. These are the people that are on the front lines, making sure that the world is a better place. So all of them are just going to mention one thing that they love being involved with, I promise. And if you're involved with the same thing as well, councilmembers, you can give a little shout if you want to. We'll start with our Person of the Year, Juanita Lomax, who just is rocking it. She's incredible. She's on many boards. Tom, the phrase was, "Don't be bored, be on a board." Juanita is a good example of that.
I appreciate it. And don't feel bad, I had to leave our ceremony for a board meeting as well. First, I want to thank everybody for the recognition today. One thing that I do love, or organization I love to work with, they're very hard to pick one, they do great, great work, but I would have to say PWA, Professional Women's Network. It is an organization in the city who brings together a lot of women from various backgrounds and professions to really inspire and motivate and move each other along in our career. So I would have to go with that organization.
Okay, awesome. Congratulations.
Thank you.
All right, we'll just keep coming down. The former interim county councilwoman.
Hello. Yes, I would like to thank you all for this recognition, Tom, as well. This is incredible and love it. So many organizations that I love working with, NHCO, the Brazilian community, but one organization near and dear to my heart is the Leukemia and Lymphoma Society. They put on a great late-the-night walk every year, record-breaking numbers in the Pittsburgh area this year. So I recommend getting involved with them. Thank you.
Next one. Megan.
Hi, I'm Megan Cully. I am, my favorite charity pretty much is pretty close to home, personal, and for my family as well, is for the Walk to End Alzheimer's. And for seven years, I've been a walker, but for two years, I've been on the committee. And so Nathaniel's going to come up, he's part of the Alzheimer's Association, but to be able to do it in memory of someone that was very close to me, my wonderful grandmother who passed away from this terrible disease, April, excuse me, 2007. And Mr. Baker actually walked with me this year, which I had the privilege to. So it was just very nice and everything, and thank you guys again for this award and recognition and everything. So thank you.
Hi. So I'm Sandra McDonald. As everyone else has already said, thank you so much. I'm a little biased, but my favorite organization is Big Brothers, Big Sisters. Our youth are our future, and everyone needs someone in their corner to empower them and the potential they have. So that's why I do what I do.
Hi, everyone. I'm Amber Deemer, and I'm so honored to be here. This award is not about me, but about my we. And that's my friends, family, colleagues, mentors, Mr. Baker here, that really empower and challenge and believe in the work that I do. I'm really passionate about community engagement in this city, and one way I give back is through the mentoring partnership of southwestern PA. As we all know, relationships and mentorship matters, especially with just the things that are impacting our community today. So I really, really love working with that organization, and I would inspire or encourage you to learn more. So thank you.
Hello, my name is Nathaniel Sofranco. Thank you for this recognition. I am a development manager for the Alzheimer's Association, as Megan had mentioned, and I get to work with amazing volunteers such as Megan and Tom, who was a coach for our rival's flag football game. So there's many ways to get involved, through fundraising, through community education, and we are the largest nonprofit funder of research that is happening close to home, right over in the University of Pittsburgh. So if you're looking to get involved, I recommend reaching out to me with the Alzheimer's Association. Thank you so much.
Good evening. My name's Don Pinucci. The group that I'm extremely biased with is Boys and Girls Clubs of Western PA. I've been with the organizations since I was six years old. I grew up at our Carnegie Clubhouse, which I believe Mr. President, your son Jack, also attended. Tell him I said hello, and we missed him there. You know, Boys and Girls Clubs, dear to my heart. We do so much for the kids, after-school, summer camp programs. We've been launching more STEM and literacy art programs as well. So we're in so many different communities in Shady Side, Millville, Carnegie, Lawrenceville. We actually just opened up a clubhouse in Somerset County now, as well as we're trying to expand. But if you're in any of these areas, please stop in. Our doors are always wide open, and you can see the amazing things we're doing with the kids, especially during the summertime. It's always cool to see. So thank you guys so much for having us this evening, and, you know, Boys and Girls Club. Thanks, guys.
Former Dapper Dan winner. He won alongside of Mario Lemieux his year when he was the Student of the Year, which is pretty cool. So Dylan.
Hi, everyone. First, I do want to thank everyone for the recognition, just like everyone else here. I don't do it for the recognition, but always does feel good to be recognized when it does happen. Yeah, as many organizations I'm involved with, I have to talk about the Accessible Prosthetics Initiative. It's a nonprofit I started about four years ago, and our mission is in the name. Essentially, we seek to increase access to prosthetics, technologies, and care. Really impactful moment that just happened this last weekend. I've been helping a little six-year-old girl just outside Cleveland, her name's Mary Smith, get a couple prosthetics. So her family friend reached out to us a little bit ago, saying, "Hey, you know, she was born without an arm, can you help her out?" Last Christmas, she was hoping for presents, and then she started crying when she was done, and Grandma asked why, and then Mary said, "Because I didn't get the arm that I asked for." So we're doing everything we can to get her an arm before Christmas, doing fundraising. But that's the organization that I've been working with to develop. Now we have over 200 volunteers across the country, in 10 different states, and nine different collegiate chapters. So thank you so much for the recognition.
Hi, everyone. Thank you for having us. It's hard for me to choose which organization I'm most passionate about. I'm very blessed in my professional life to work with so many. In the year and a half that I've been with Program Taitson as an enterprise, I've worked with upwards of 35 nonprofit organizations across our region in a capacity-building initiative. So I'm very grateful to be able to work with so many diverse organizations. I'd say the one that I was surprised to be able to work with this year and who connected me with Get Involved, a board member, Ashley Pryory. She has an organization, yeah. Along with Queen's Gambit, she runs the Y22 Youth on Boards Initiative, which I became very passionate about and working with her. There is a growing, growing generational divide in the nonprofit sector that's making it very hard for any progress, and a lot of equity issues in the sector. So she's doing great work, and it's great to see an initiative led by a young person. I was involved with the Get on Boards Initiative in Scotland that was not led by youth. So it's really great seeing people doing that work, and I'm grateful to be able to be involved in such a big capacity with all of that. So thank you again. It's wonderful meeting you.
Thank you. And I will say, before we take the group photo, I mentioned at the event last Thursday, for Dylan, seven years ago, the award that he won for Emerging Leader was young, named or given to a person that just became the Lieutenant Governor of the Commonwealth. So Dylan pressure is on for seven years from now. Austin Davis won the award seven years ago, literally, so now he's going to be the LG. So congratulations to all of our winners. Councilman Dewar, thanks for having us. Good to see you, colleagues and friends. And a pretty inspiring group, right? I hope you learned some new organizations that maybe you didn't hear of. Councilman DeMarco, you did play chess against Ashley Pryory, and she did defeat you back in the day. So that was a good memory, but... That is true. She did say that. All right, thanks, everyone. One more big round of applause for our 2022 Service Summit winners. Congratulations.
Do I have like four of you, or two of you going to the side? Okay, squeeze in just a tiny bit on the bottom. All right, everybody, ready? Okay, one, two, three. Ready, one, two, three.
All right. All right.
Okay, do we have any public comments on any agenda items?
We have one individual who signed up for agenda topics, that's Laura Perkins.
It's about the budget. Are you gonna, is that an agenda item?
It technically is. There are two budget bills on the agenda tonight.
Okay. In three minutes, right? Okay. Mi nombre es Laura Perkins. Soy orgullosamente de Pittsburgh y vivo en friendship. Desde hace cinco años soy la organizadora de respuesta ante emergencia para Casa San Jose. Casa San Jose es una organización comunitaria sin fines de lucro que conecta, apoya y hace abogacía e incidencia con y para la comunidad latina en el suroeste de Pensilvania. Yo no soy abogada pero coordino nuestros servicios legales además de abogar para los derechos humanos de nuestra comunidad inmigrante. Estoy aquí para hablar sobre la accesibilidad de espacios públicos para personas que no hablan inglés y pedir que prioricen esa accesibilidad en el presupuesto del Plan Fiscal del Condado de Allegheny para el año de 2023. Si mis comentarios les confunden, si esto es frustrante o parece una pérdida de su tiempo, imagínense la frustración de nosotros, de nuestros vecinos cuando no hablan inglés. Además, si cada vez que pide intérprete y la reacción es, "Uff, qué obstáculo! No tengo tiempo para eso y nunca me han pedido eso, nadie." Puede imaginar que nuestra comunidad latina no suele querer entrar en esos espacios. Y eso es una lástima porque según el censo nacional mientras la población de nuestro condado creció solo 2.2% entre 2010 y 2020, la población latina creció 80%. La comunidad hispanohablante vive aquí, existen las escuelas, juegan en nuestros parques, interactúan con las aguasiles, sheriffs, van a la cárcel, reciben estampillas de comida, enfrentan incertidumbre de vivienda y son dueños de negocios. Por eso estoy aquí para pedirles, rogarles que el presupuesto puesto del Condado de Allegheny considere la necesidad y el costo financiero de accesibilidad al idioma para pagar interpretes y traductores en cada proyecto que involucra la interacción con el público. That's me. Is that my, oh, no. I have one minute, okay. En la próxima reunión del County Council voy a hablar en español sobre la importancia del Proyecto Immigration Consequences Group, ICG, en la sección 14 de Defensores Públicos del Presupuesto. Me da mucha tristeza si eso vaya a ser el primer comentario público que ustedes hayan escuchado en un idioma que no sea inglés, porque las experiencias y perspectivas de las personas que no hablan inglés tienen que ser escuchadas. Ahora les doy mis comentarios traducidos a inglés. Gracias por escucharme y por favor contáctame si puedo apoyarles. En la dedicación al condado que sirve a todos, no solo a las personas que hablan inglés. I have translation of what I just said here that I'll hand out to you. This is not mine.
If you'd give it to our...
I have an English and Spanish. It's double-sided.
Perfect, thank you.
Gracias.
Okay, approval of minutes, 12512-22.
That's a motion to approve of the minutes of September 13, 2022, regular meeting of council.
Motion has been made in second. Any discussion? Hearing, none. All those in favor signify by saying aye. All those opposed? Motion carries. Presentation of appointments?
We have none.
Okay. Unfinished business. Committee on Appointment Review for the second reading, 12477-22.
Approving the appointment of William On Deck to the Board of Property Assessment Appeals and Review for term to expire on December 31, 2025, sponsored by the Chief Executive.
Councilwoman Nakareti Chavkas?
President Katina, the Committee on Appointment Review met on November the 15, 2022, and affirmatively recommends the appointment of William On Deck to the Board of Property Assessment Appeals and Review.
Is there a second? Motion has been made in second. Any discussion? Hearing, no discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Anyone opposed? Motion carries. 12478-22.
Approving the appointment of Wade Fergustine to the Board of Property Assessment Appeals and Review for term to expire on December 31, 2025, sponsored by the Chief Executive.
Councilwoman Nakareti Chavkas?
President Katina, the Committee on Appointment Review met on November the 15, 2022, affirmatively recommends the appointment of Wade Fergustine to the Board of Property Assessment Appeals and Review.
You're making that motion. Who would like the second?
Second.
Motion has been made in second. Any discussion?
Second.
Hearing, no discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye. All those opposed? Motion carries. Committee on Parks for the second reading, 12483-22.
An ordinance to the County of Allegheny Commonwealth of Pennsylvania authorizing the acceptance of three parcels of land located contiguous to the county's North Park, sponsored by the Chief Executive.
Vice President Paul Mary?
Thank you, Mr. President, members of council. We met a week ago, and this was affirmatively recommended by our committee, and move for approval.
Make motion.
Motion has been made in second. Any discussion? Hearing, no discussion. Jared, would you please take role?
On the motion to approve, Ms. Bennett.
Yes.
Mr. Bekowski?
Yes.
Mr. DiMarco?
Yes.
Mr. Dewar?
Yes.
Ms. Filiaji?
Yes.
Mr. Fatulis?
Yes.
Ms. Hallam?
Yes.
Mr. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Macy?
Yes.
Mr. Macy, you with us?
Yes, Mr. Macy.
Thank you very much.
Macy with yes.
Thank you. Ms. Nakareti Chavkas?
Yes.
Mr. Paul Mary?
Yes.
Mr. Paul Messina?
Yes.
Ms. Pritsio?
Yes.
Mr. Walton?
Yes.
President Katina?
Yes.
Eyes 15, no zero. The bill passes.
Committee on Public Works for the second reading, 12505-22.
An ordinance authorizing the County of Allegheny through the Department of Public Works and the Law Department to acquire by condemnation a permanent right-of-way, a slope easement, and temporary construction easement from one parcel of land located at 3222 Mount Troy Road Reserve Township, Allegheny County, required for the stabilization of Mount Troy Road, and to take such further actions may be necessary under applicable law, including but not limited to the eminent domain code sponsored by the Chief Executive.
Councilman Bekowski?
The Committee on Public Works met on November 15, and affirmatively recommended this to council, and I make that motion.
Motion has been made in second. Any discussion? Hearing, no discussion. Jared, please take role.
On the motion to approve, Ms. Bennett?
Yes.
Mr. Bekowski?
Yes.
Mr. DiMarco?
Yes.
Mr. Dewar?
Yes.
Ms. Filiaji?
Yes.
Mr. Fatulis?
Yes.
Ms. Hallam?
Yes.
Mr. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Macy?
Yes.
Ms. Nakareti Chavkas?
Yes.
Mr. Paul Mary?
Yes.
Mr. Paul Messina?
Yes.
Ms. Pritsio?
Yes.
Mr. Walton?
Yes.
President Katina?
Yes.
Eyes 15, no zero. The bill passes.
New business, or, I'm sorry, liaison reports. Anyone have a liaison report this evening? Councilman DiMarco?
Yeah, I'd just like to commend the employees of the Allegheny County Elections Department, who I thought did a phenomenal job on Election Day. All the mail-in ballots that were received on Election Day were all opened, scanned in, and the results were posted on Election Night. So I really think Allegheny County is the standard by which many of the counties in Pennsylvania, the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, should look towards learning how to best operate under this new system with the mail-in voting and things like that. So again, just want to commend Director David Voy, Solicitor Alan Upsetnik, Chet Harhut, and Jessica Garfolo for a great job in handling everything on Election Day.
Yeah. President Katina, I will also say that, you know, even more impressive was Allegheny County outvoted Philadelphia County. So it wasn't just in terms of the, you know, Philly's the largest county in terms of population. We had more mail-in ballot applications, and we counted them faster than the largest county in the state and the Commonwealth did. So I think everyone from top to bottom can be very proud of us being able to get those results out so quickly, and the work that was done to make Election Day go on as smooth as it did, so.
Thank you. Anyone else this evening? Hearing, no one else? New business ordinances and resolutions, 12513-22.
An ordinance to the County of Allegheny Commonwealth of Pennsylvania amending the Administrative Code of Allegheny County, Article 301, entitled County Council, Section 5-301.06, entitled Prohibitions, to repeal Section 5-301.06A in order to eliminate reference to the designed-to-run requirement that formerly existed in the Home Rule Charter of Allegheny County, sponsored by Councilmembers Macy and Dewar.
That will go to Government Reform, 12514-22.
A resolution of the County of Allegheny Commonwealth of Pennsylvania adopting an operating budget pursuant to Article 4, Section 2, and Article 7, Section 4 of the Home Rule Charter, by setting forth appropriations to pay the expenses of conducting the public business of Allegheny County and for meeting debt charges for the fiscal year beginning January 1, 2023, and ending December 31, 2023, sponsored by Councilmember Paul Messina.
That will go to Budget and Finance, 125, I'm sorry, 12515-22.
A resolution of the County of Allegheny Commonwealth of Pennsylvania adopting a capital budget pursuant to Article 4, Section 2, and Article 7, Section 4 of the Home Rule Charter, by setting forth appropriations to pay the expenses for capital expenditures during fiscal year beginning January 1, 2023, and ending December 31, 2023, sponsored by Councilmember Paul Messina.
That will go to Budget and Finance. And then, new business motions, 12516-22.
A motion of the Council of Allegheny County authorizing the retention of the legal services of John Campus Esquire and the law firm of Didero Matta and Campus, PC, as special co-council to the Council, sponsored by Councilmember Paul Mary.
Councilman Paul Mary?
Thank you, Mr. President, members of council. This has been overdue for a while, and we're glad to get this settled this evening, and I move for approval. Please.
Is there any discussion? Hearing, no discussion. Do we need a voice vote or roll call vote? Oh, I'm sorry, was there a second? Okay. Motion has been made in second. Roll call vote, please, Jared.
On the motion approved, Ms. Bennett?
Yes.
Mr. Bekowski?
Yes.
Mr. DiMarco?
Yes.
Mr. Dewar?
Yes.
Ms. Filiaji?
Yes.
Mr. Fatulis?
Yes.
Ms. Hallam?
Yes.
Mr. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Macy?
Yes.
Thank you. Ms. Nakareti Chavkas?
Yes.
Mr. Paul Mary?
Yes.
Mr. Paul Messina?
Yes.
Ms. Pritsio?
Yes.
Mr. Walton?
Yes.
President Katina?
Yes.
Eyes 15, no zero. The bill passes.
12517-22.
A motion of the Council of Allegheny County authorizing continuation of the services of Dreamscape Video Productions to provide council meetings, video streaming, and recording, and other videography services to County Council through January 31, 2024, sponsored by Councilmember Paul Mary.
Vice President Paul Mary?
Thank you, Mr. President, members of council. And this is our video, obviously, what is a video productions and the video streaming, and we can, this is valuable for County Council all year long, and just move for approval. Thank you.
Second. Motion has been made in second. Any discussion? Does anyone object to just doing a voice vote? All those in favor signify by saying aye. All those opposed? Motion carries. Notification of contracts, anything?
We have none.
Okay, we had public comments on a general item. We had an individual sign up after the fact today. Does anyone object to letting her speak tonight? Yvonne, you want to come up?
Excuse me, before we start, we did have one individual who did sign up in a timely fashion also, so, as long as you know there are two.
My name is Yvonne F. Brown. I am an advocate for children, youth, families, elderly, and hospital workers. I have come today to say thank you to Mr. Walton for, we had a dinner yesterday, that his fraternity brothers, they had served us, the food was delicious, and I wanted to say thank you very much. But I still have a problem with, I live in the high-rise, Kaley River, Irving's High Rise, up in the top of the Hill District. In order for us, the seniors, to get to the hospital, we must take two buses. We must go to town, take the bus to come out. I've come down here before. I came down 2017 with petitions. When I spoke with Mr. Walton, he says to me, well, Mrs. Brown, my good friend, Saludine's sister lived in the building that we do, and he says he'll set up the meeting with her. And when he said that, I said, but sir, he said, I ain't got nothing to do with that. We have not had a meeting that the seniors wanted for years to come up and tell us why we can't have a bus to go down to the bottom of the hospital, Mercy Hospital, you understand that? When, as I speak at City Council, and when the President Kraus was able to get buses to take the drunks from the bar down to Second Avenue, from Second Avenue to the bar, because the people were complaining about them peeing and doing different things in their yard. If you could get buses to take and drive people to get drunk, for them to get drunk and come out in your neighborhood and kill you, why can't you get buses for a senior? Kaley River was would turn over in his grave if he knew that this is what this is doing. Thank you.
Thank you. Next?
And the other individual who signed up was Amy Comparatore.
My name's Amy Comparatore, and may it please the council. On Stockton, I have three items to present on housing homelessness and Port Authority transit. On Stockton Avenue between Sandusky Street and Cedar Avenue sits an encampment of 24 tents, people who are homeless, just as I used to be once upon a time in our great city of Pittsburgh and County of Allegheny. I know the journey because I have lived it. Roughly two nights ago, a woman was in the encampments vomiting nonstop. Police and EMS arrived on scene. Police arrived first, and the young lady told the officer, I can't do this anymore, over and over again. Remember her as we go on, vomiting in 21-degree weather. HACP has no responsibility but unto itself, Housing Authority of the City of Pittsburgh. According to the City Controller's Annual Comprehensive Financial Report of 2021, on page 22, the Housing Authority of the City of Pittsburgh, or HACP, is self-governing, skips city and county and Commonwealth accountability. HACP, though, gets city, county, Commonwealth, and federal funding, and ought to be held accountable for all the people it serves and all the places it takes funding from. Which, on the subject of accountability, let's talk about Port Authority and transit. Over 27,975,600 people as of the 2021 Ridership Annual Report. And PRT, or Port Authority of Allegheny County, prior to COVID, we had, in my estimate, one of Allegheny County, prior to COVID, we had, in my estimate, one of the best transit agency performances that I have ever seen. Okay. Then there was rebellion with the drivers getting vaccinated, drivers who took their rebellion on the general public by showing up and not doing their routes intentionally. Buses, though, don't come at all, with people waiting an extra 30 minutes to a full hour, depending upon the route. Now, doing that in freezing cold weather, or what's been happening lately, 21 to 30-degree weather, yet another authority gone rogue because of the privilege and luxury of its autonomy. We need to start holding rogue authorities accountable to the good people of Pittsburgh and Allegheny County. So I am asking if you will be able to help assist people. We have over 215 units right now that are available under Mr. Binion's direct orders this morning at City Council, and those would be nice things, thank you, to give to people.
Thank you. Before we adjourn this evening, does anyone object to sending a letter on behalf of County Council to Port Authority asking what they can do to possibly address the situation for Yvonne? Anyone object? You object to sending a letter to Port Authority?
Yes. Look, let's be real candid. Funding is being decreased for mass transit, and has been decreasing for mass transit. It is clear what is taking place. There's a bus that stops less than 30 yards from the front door there. To run a bus, to run a bus to Mercy Hospital adds to the operating costs of the port authority. You can get there, you can get there in a reasonable amount of time with minimal discomfort. I object.
Okay, so, okay, you don't want to send a letter, then?
No.
Okay, because you don't feel Yvonne, her concerns merit that, merit any investigation?
Point of information.
This is for just, this is open for discussion. This is council. Point, I mean, we'll take, I mean, I hear what you're saying, Councilman Walton, so, I mean, we'll take that under advisement. I mean, we won't send a letter, but obviously, I mean, if someone does come before us, I mean, I think we have an obligation to at least try to look into it and see what we can do to make things better.
I think you could always send a letter and ask. There's nothing wrong with that.
Are you, are you okay with that?
No. Well, that's okay. First, we got 15 people.
Does anyone, does anyone? Is everyone else okay with that? Investigate, see what they can do to investigate the situation, make it better?
President Katina, is this Councilman Walton's district? I assume, I'm not going to go over to it respectfully. I'm going to defer to Councilman Walton. It's his district. I would, I would hope he would give me the same courtesy.
Okay. Is Councilman Bekowski?
I concur with Councilman Duer that we should give some weight to the person that's closest to the issue. But the second issue that came up, that I'd like to just add my two cents again, is that the limited authority the County Council has over all of these various authorities that really affect the quality of life in Allegheny County, and we have really so little influence over them at all, even though they're using taxpayer dollars. As an aside, as an aside, President Katina, there are greater issues that are at play at Kaley River Irving across the street from my home. That's 300 feet from my home. There are greater issues at Kaley River Irving relative to public safety, relative to a host of issues that I'm working on as we speak. And there's a matter of priorities. I'd much rather have residents being safe. I'd much rather have the facility being operated in a legitimate and straightforward manner. And those are priorities that I'm working on for the residents who come to me on a routine basis and talk about what's going on in that facility.
I live in Ms. Bennet's.
Okay. No, you're out of order. I'm not downplaying anything you're doing, Councilman Walton. All I'm saying is if someone came before us, I mean, I'm just trying to.
It's not as if I haven't given the consideration.
I understand that. I'm not downplaying anything you're doing.
Well, then give me the consideration to do things in my district as I deem appropriate.
Okay. We're just trying to offer support to you in doing whatever you want with your district.
If I, if I have a question with the Port Authority, I'll reach out to the Port Authority. It's not as if I have not.
Okay, Councilman Walton, again, you don't need to get derogatory, but I mean, there's no, we're trying to help people here. I mean, that's all it's about, trying to help people.
It's my job.
Again, please, this isn't anything against you, Councilman Walton, so please don't take it that way. No, it's not. He's, he's trying his best, and, I mean, we're all trying our best up here, so we'll try to, we'll try to work, I mean, he'll try to work, you do, and we'll try, I'll try to work with you to make this better. Councilman DiMarco?
Yeah, President Katina, I mean, I would agree with Councilman Duer and Councilman Bekowski here that our colleague, Councilman Walton, probably knows best what his constituents need and in what priority they need them. I know from having the Port Authority come before us, because I've been on here over seven years, and we had people coming, asking for routes, like in Baldwin, John, do you remember all that? It costs like a million dollars a year for the Port Authority to put on another route, okay? And then you have to have the ridership to be able to justify it. So it can't just be about the convenience of just a few, okay? So I would just, whatever you choose to do, you know, I'm going to defer to Councilman Walton here and keep my name off it, but I would just ask that if you do send anything, that it, it doesn't come to the Port Authority as if we're trying to tell them that they need to take and provide something.
Oh, no, I'm just investigating the ma, I'd like to raise the question. I mean, that's all it is. It's a question. Someone came before us, asked us this, and that's what we're trying to, I mean, it's our responsibility to go back to people and, I mean, ask the questions that were being asked, because, I mean, I, I understand everything that Councilman Walton's doing, and he's trying his best, but I mean, if someone comes before us and asks us a general question.
No, I understand. I just think that sometimes if we're sending an official letter that's coming from all the members of council, it looks a little bit.
We can't dictate to them, obviously, I mean, that we want this fixed or what have you. I mean, just someone came before us and basically, I mean, someone said this, this, and this, and we'd like you to investigate it or what have you.
We could just have text, submit a testimony, or forward that to the Port Authority as well.
Yeah, exactly. It doesn't even, yeah, make something simple. So, yeah. Councilman Fatulis, did you have anything?
I just see no harm in a request or just a letter that states, "Can you put this on?" And they'll, they'll evaluate, because they do it every year when they do their routes with their budget. Whether they do it or not, it's beyond our control, but on her behalf, why not? What's, what's it going to hurt? I mean, worst they could say is no, but at least we asked. That's all. I think it's a courtesy you just asked. That's all.
Anyone else this evening?
Yeah, yes, Mr. President. I would just say that I think that, I mean, sending a letter seems to be kind of a hollow gesture. I think it's something that requires some advocacy. I think that Mr. Walton better knows the particulars of what is playing out in his district, and if anyone is going to be persuasive in terms of perhaps moving the Port Authority to address this in some way, it would be someone who's representing that district where constituents, where his or her constituents are being, you know, impacted in some way. So in that regard, I think that we've captured this here in the conversation, and I don't know that any formal action by council is necessary. I think we ought to defer to Mr. Walton.
Councilman Filagi?
Thank you. And yes, I would concur with Councilman Klein in that it is a gesture, but a gesture that could be misconstrued as something more official. So I would definitely be hesitant and not be in favor of doing that, because clearly, Councilman Walton is very capable of dealing with that issue in his own district. So thank you for the opportunity.
And in closing, I take this as a personal assault on my legislative responsibility for my district. And I don't want, and lastly, I don't, I don't want to suggest that there are other motives that are intended with this gesture.
Again, I'm not even going to go there this evening, so we're, at this point in time, we're going to adjourn. We're going into an executive session downstairs to deal with litigation. So thank you, everyone. Have a good evening.